Okay, 6:30, I call this meeting of the Manchester by the Sea Board Select Board.
Jeff?
Here.
Brian?
Here.
Kathy? And John?
John is here.
Are there any public comments on non-agenda items, but this meeting is being reported? Don't see anything online.
I don't see it either.
There is no chairman's report today. Next question is, are there action items that we need to update? Okay, the first item on our agenda is the Historic District Commission's 50th Commendation. Like, do you like to speak to that?
Well, I submitted some information to you all that I can talk generally about versus 1960, the state passed the law, Mass. in the law for EC, which enables communities across the state to create historic districts. We, in Manchester, passed by town meeting in 1975, a local district which starts around Ashland, continues down Bridge Street and Bennett Street, through Central, Union, up Washington, Summer Street, pretty linear district. That created the commission, which oversees the district and the changes that happen from, that are visible from a public way. So if someone comes in seeking a building permit, the building inspector directs them to the Historic District Commission to file an application for a certificate of appropriateness, non-applicability, or hardship. And then we determine whether it's in keeping with the historic character of the community. We have guidelines that we developed.
No, they've been changed several times.
So...
I can comment to that, but I will hold my comments.
Okay, the law enables commissions to create guidelines so that it's not just sort of a blanket, whatever we say goes kind of thing. There are some criteria. And the National Register of Historic Places District, which closely mirrors, but is a little bit larger than our local district, was created in 1990. And since then, there hasn't really been any changes to the district or any attempts to create other districts. So obviously, the community has many historic resources and many areas you might consider to be a district based on geography and proximity of housing or buildings. So two years ago, we started creating a plan to survey the whole town. We got a consultant who created that survey plan along the guidelines that Mass. Historic, the Mass. Historical Commission sets out. And then last year, we had first phase surveying inventory done with a consultant. He went up School Street and some of the streets to the east, and that just was finished at the end of September. And it's on our website, so you can check out and see what some of the historic properties are around the School Street area. And we hope to continue. There's probably three to five more phases to go, so we're going to seek some more grant funding possibly from the state, although they get their money from the National Park Service, though it may be difficult to get any more federal funding in the meanwhile. But it was a $30,000 project, so it's not a lot of money to do a phase of survey, so we may seek, um, on tour CPC. That's all. Thank you.
John?
Yeah, I'd like to add to that. Rosemary's been the chair of the Historic District Commission for a number of years. I probably had the longest tenure, at least recently, I think nine or 10 years. I think I finished out somebody's term for a half a year and then was on there for nine years. With regard to the guidelines, when I came on, that was my first assignment. The guidelines were from 1981, and they were five pages long. So there really wasn't any kind of guidance. And so I recall going through guidelines from, I will say, 10 different communities all throughout the North Shore, looking for communities that had historic stuff. And then stealing paragraphs from those various guidelines that made sense. And it probably took, it took over a year to do that, and we wound up with a document that is, what, maybe 40 pages long or something, 40 or 50 pages long. It stands today, maybe, I think it needs to be updated a little bit now, but a lot of it still applies with regard to what the situation is today. I thought it would be good, when I saw that this was on the agenda, I said, okay, so what's the Historic District Commission done that makes a difference in the district over the past 10 years or so? Because I don't have perspective back from that. There are three projects that stand out in my mind. One that we reviewed on several occasions was the honor roll on the common and the common itself. And that was a very major undertaking and it was not without controversy as major projects often are, but I think we'll all agree that the common looks a lot better than it did say four or five years or so ago. So that certainly is something that people drive through town. They see what the common looks like, and certainly the honor roll is a prominent feature of that. There are two buildings, I think, that stood out in my mind in review, and a lot of the reviews that go on in the Historic District are things that the average person would not see. We're dealing with windows and roofs sometimes, things that fences, things that wouldn't necessarily be obvious. But on Ashland, there are two Greek Revival buildings opposite each other, and both of them were in serious disrepair six, seven years ago. I know one was done when you were, I think, on, Rosemary, but the other one, I think, predated you, and it had, you know, metal fire escapes on the side hanging off. It was really in tough shape. And our objectives, obviously, from a street perspective, make the buildings look as original as possible. And I think both buildings have been restored, and if you go down Ashland and look at them, they are really very, very nice structures that are reflective of the time when they were built, which was probably the mid-19th century or so. And then the Robardi Building, which is across the street here. That was restored, you know, six or seven years ago?
Up in Central?
Yeah. No, Robardi.
The...
Where you live.
Yeah, no, that was done, he started, like, bought it in 16.
Okay.
So...
It was done in 18 or something?
16, no, yeah, he started, probably in 17 or 18, yeah.
Anyway, that building is well, but those are the structures that stand out in my mind in the, at least the recent history, and as Rosemary said, it goes back a long time, back to the 70s. But I think that the town has done well by the Historic District Commission, and I certainly do look forward to many more years of the committee keeping an eye on how our downtown evolves from a...
Also, the Historical Commission, our design of legislation. And so that kind of ebbs and flows in activity, and we've been doing a little work with the museum to try to engage a little more about activities, like in the cemeteries. Jack Burke of CPC has been focused on restoring the headstones and the fencing around Rosehill Cemetery, and obviously, the presentation of the chapel was a project that CPC funded and that Historical Commission supported. And so I think there's some more opportunities for things outside the district to get some attention and support CPC funds or other attention, just marketing, really.
I just, I think the Historic Commission has done a great job. It's, you know, I've only been here since 2013, and I can see the change just within that timeframe, you know, and the buildings are looking beautifully. I think the few meetings that I've attended, I hear a nice balance between trying to let the property owners do some modernization, you know, for ease of maintenance and stuff like that, yet still keeping with the historic character of the downtown. I think the Commission's done a really nice job with that balance. Thank you.
I hope that the Select Board extend their congratulations to the Historic District Commission for the 50th anniversary and for the work that they have done in improving the consistency and beauty of town.
Second.
Any discussion? John?
Yes.
Anne says yes.
Kathy?
Brian? Jeff? Thank you very much.
Great, thanks for coming by, yeah.
The next item is the FYC manual comprehensive financial report award, which came from the Government Finance Officers Association, and it's the ninth year.
This is the ninth consecutive year that Manchester by the Sea has received this certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting. So it really started when Andrea Mainville was, joined the team here, but it really is a spread-out team effort amongst all department heads and their supporting staff. So we wanted to add it to the agenda to recognize the good work that our team has done to, for almost 10 years in a row now. We'll be applying for our next one. The way that Government Finance Officers Association speaks to this award is that it demonstrates a constructive spirit of full disclosure, to clearly communicate its financial story and motivate potential users and user groups to read the report. The certificate of achievement is the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental accounting and financial reporting, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by a government and its management. So to Andrea and the team, past and present, congratulations and great work.
Continue to do a great job.
The next item is a reserve fund transfer for the fire, from the Finance Committee's reserve to the fire department for $13,239, a matching part of a FEMA grant for fire equipment and self-contained breathing access. The committee has already approved this. Any discussion?
What's the total cost here? The 13 is just brilliant.
I have the other one.
A couple hundred thousand or something.
260, 260 plus, yeah, so it's 24 packs, another 24 bottles and two rip packs.
Okay, so we're about 5% of that.
Yeah, and they were due to expire in this coming June, where we would have to replace them all ourselves, so this is exceptional timing.
Just a quick question. Do we have, because we cooperate, you know, regionally with other districts, do we cooperate on purchases?
So we use the state bid list and the cooperative purchasing agreement.
Like others, like the state negotiates the cost and we just place the PO?
Exactly.
Got it, okay.
This is, I'll just, you know, mention regarding the chief and his effort to get this, this is a really big grant for us, you know, almost more than $280,000 total for only to have to put $13,000 of our own money into this. This is a, this is a big grant, and, you know, just want to recognize the chief for his efforts.
If I can publicly recognize firefighter Eric Junko, who's also instrumental in helping write the grants and come up with different ways of presenting it, get it sold.
What's the life expectancy of this equipment?
As long as they don't change.
When are you going to be back?
As long as they don't change. We should get 15 to 20 years out of that.
Oh, okay, all right.
Nice, nice.
Oh, am I up? Geez, you're right. I move that the board approve this reserve fund transfer of $13,239 to the fire equipment SCBA account.
Second. Were there discussions? Jeff?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Agreed, thank you. Kathy?
Yes.
Anne says yes?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. The next item is to vote to accept FEMA assistance to firefighters grant. There are 15 pages.
You got the short version.
Requirements that you have to meet. I assume that you are prepared to meet all of them and understand all of them. Good, so I don't have to.
Want to explain some more of it?
Sure. So current staffing in the fire department is four groups staffed with four firefighters, an officer and three firefighters, so four bodies. And then if one's on vacation, sick, personal day, we drop down to three. When this grant came into place, this is like hitting the lottery. They get thousands and thousands of applicants every year for this. What put us to the top is this makes us meet national standards of going to have five people per shift and then drop into four, so we can maintain that staffing. So that, and then they take into account, you know, we protect just shy of $5 billion worth of property in town, along with the highways, infrastructure, and the population. So they look at all the hazards in town and see if this is worth federal grant. And this year, we were chosen for the grant. It's a three-year performance period. Year one and two, they pick up 75%. Year three, they pick up 35%. There's no requirement past the three-year period. Kind of, you know, forthcoming, I think I've talked to everybody, is my job in the three years during this performance period is to show a financial benefit to the town with the added staff, added services, et cetera. So this is a good trial period for us to be at that number and show the resources and the capabilities that it improves the fire.
We had a lengthy discussion about it at the Finance Committee meeting as well, and they voted to support the Select Board's acceptance of the grant.
Will the Select Board accept the FEMA assistance to firefighters grant?
I just got a question, a couple of questions. How does this affect overtime, and is training involved?
So training is involved, depending on the people that we hire. We've been very good. We've been able to train firefighters and paramedics, which I believe that we'll be able to with onboarding these individuals. So the grant does cover training. And then when, respect to overtime, it's pretty much, as you see on our curve now, it's kind of come down that we're your staffing, because we just dropped down when somebody's on leave, we don't backfill that person. Obviously, if we have multiple people, you know, unforeseen things, that could trigger overtime, but as you've seen in the last two or three years since I've been here, you've seen a dramatic decrease in that, and that's just because of that increased staffing. So it's correlated to staffing.
Right, so I think part of that correlation, though, is the Call Firefighting Service, which you've done an outstanding job in beefing up.
Yeah.
Again, same comment I had two weeks ago. This is nice to overstaff while we're doing some planned retirements, et cetera, but the way we were going to keep to the standard, you know, staffing or close to it, is through the Call service, so that we wouldn't have to pay as many full-time firefighters. That was the whole strategy that, you know, was originally developed, because it is a little town. So I think you, again, and you've done a great job with the Call Firefighting Service, and that's proof that that, you know, is working to reduce the overtime.
Other comments?
Kathy just stole mine.
I did?
I was going to ask about Call.
That was the point.
Ready for the vote?
Yeah.
Jeff?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Kathy? Anne says yes.
John, yes.
Thank you guys very much.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Great job, I swear.
Yeah.
One of those firefighters will be signed to Brian.
Probably a good idea.
We don't need to go there.
The next item on the agenda is the Downtown Improvement Committee Draft Mission Statement.
I'll introduce the topic. Yeah, as the liaison to the Downtown Improvement Projects Committee, we agreed that since they seem to be involved in different ways with the downtown improvement than their original charter. And so we asked the team to go back, look at their charter, and modernize it a bit. And when we looked at that versus other communities, town charters for their downtown committees, we also noticed that the other communities had much simpler, brief charters. So rather than just, you know, nitpicking with the one they had, they did a rewrite to model a more modern version of a downtown improvement committee charter, and you have that before you, and I think, you know, Steve Carhart is here as the chair with Marlene Dolan, so any feedback you have, any changes you would like, and Steve, I'll turn it over to you.
Yeah, well, just as background, the original Downtown Improvement Project Committee was formed about 20 years ago to redo the downtown sidewalks and curbing and lighting. And that has had some financial problems, which we are hopeful we solve in the not-too-distant future, and we've been working with CPW to advance that consistent with the broader municipal planning. In the meantime, since I became chair of the committee, various chairs of the Select Board have asked us to do other things, like provide feedback on the planning for complete streets, to participate in things like resilience planning, the MBK zoning planning. We've undertaken projects on parking, on public restrooms, on signage, either as a group or in collaboration with other entities such as the planning board. So what we're doing here is we are trying to essentially just bring that, bring this all up to date, say this is our best understanding of what has been asked of us and what we're glad to do and expand in the future, and it seemed appropriate to put it on paper so that everybody sees it, and ask for a name change, so we're the Downtown Improvement Committee, concerned with not just the infrastructure, but also policies and planning and the other committees. As a practical matter, the way that, with the development of the improved governance practice policy, with designation of Kathy as our designated liaison, the detailed implementation of this as we go on has basically been, staying in touch with Kathy, and if we were going in a direction that was, for any reason, unlikely to be supported by the Select Board, we'd do something else. And sort of a simple example of that is when there was so much concern about the downtown commercial district over the summer, we endeavor to, you know, take an initiative in conjunction with the chamber to see what we could do to ensure that not only if there were, let's say zoning that required or encouraged commercial space on the ground floor, that there would in fact be commercial tenants, because it really doesn't work very well if the space is mandated but there are no tenants. And so we were also discussing that with Kathy. She noted, and brought me, may be aware, that the, there was going to be a longer-term effort on our planning board to define in broad terms what was going to, what the downtown improvement would be. So what we did is we determined that our scope would be narrowed to, for the moment at least, unless the planning board asked us to help them, would be narrowed to finding a way to promote commercial space that is currently in Manchester, is currently built and is vacant, with realtors and other bodies that are likely to have interest. So that's an example of how we are working with the Select Board through our liaison on a day-to-day basis in recent and current time. And obviously, we're here to, we are advisors, we're volunteers, we're not elected officials, we're not municipal employees, but we're here to help. And I like to say we try to be the grease and the glue that keeps Main Street and the town hall on the same page as best we can. So that's us, we're here to help, and we're very, very glad that there's so much interest in the future of downtown. With all the other significant things that are going on, it is too easy to take the success, particularly of our merchants in downtown, for granted and assume that the tax base and the shopping opportunities and hustle and bustle and interest just is going to be there, and it doesn't need to be affirmatively supported, and we see it as our corner of the universe to be advocates for.
Now, I looked at the copy, I tried to compare it with the previous copy. I think the key words are "an advisory body that helps to make the downtown commercially successful," commercially successful are words that weren't in there before, I don't think. And so I think that's, you know, you fill in whatever needs to be done, and you described that rather aptly just a couple of minutes ago, when you said, well, the planning board is working on this, so let's focus on this particular piece for now. And that may change as things evolve with regard to the planning board's initiatives. But I think it's good, and less is more.
Glad you feel that way.
Yeah.
I move the Select Board approve the mission statement for the Downtown Improvement Committee.
A friendly amendment? And rename it to the Downtown Improvement Committee.
It's been often referred to by its initials.
Yeah, I know, we're not going to do that anymore.
We prefer that that change.
We don't need to do that. We don't do that with Mike and Ted.
DT?
So the motion at the moment is approve the mission statement and change the thing. Second. Jeff?
Sure.
Brian?
Yes.
Kathy, yes. Anne says yes?
John, yes.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for all your work.
Thanks, Dean, yep.
We're looking forward to working with you to make a great downtown.
Thank you, and Marlene, I know she worked on that one.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
The next item on the agenda is the General Municipal Agreement for Better Public Office. I have a real net that refers generally to the Manchester former selectmen.
That was my net too, you stole my net. But it's true.
I have a, an updated version that changes the term "selectmen" to "select board" in all places, so that's here with me.
There's one tricky place where they refer to the boards of selectmen everywhere. Where is it?
Yeah, there's quite a few places I noticed, even, you know, not just our town, but...
Yeah, right. Okay, thank you, thank you.
So that's been fixed.
Any other comments?
No, I believe this arrangement with Rockport, Gloucester, Hamilton, Wenham, and us has been in place for 10-plus years. From everything I've heard so far, everyone's very pleased with the arrangement. It is going up a little bit in price. The last agreement was for $15,000 in year one, and then $17,250 in years two and three. This agreement starts with the same, $17,250, and then it goes up $500 year two, and then goes up to $17,750, and then year three, $18,250. So still not... So still not a large increase, and I think it's worth it to continue the arrangement.
Good deal. I move that the board approve the intermunicipal agreement for a district veterans' office, surface office, and authorize the town administrator to execute said agreement.
Second.
Okay, was there discussion? John.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes.
Brian.
Yes.
And Jeff.
Yes.
Okay, the next item on the, oh, just reverting to that one a little bit. I assume that when the boards of, the chairman of the boards, somebody will be organizing that and sending us know. The quarterly meetings of the.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. For the veteran service?
Yes, yes.
Yeah. Have you guys actually, as a member of the select board, actually participated that in the past? Or did the town administrator do that on your behalf?
I believe the town, well, in the time I have been chair, I have never been involved.
Okay. So, yeah, whatever, whichever way you want to do it, I can attend or have one of you guys.
But you may be my designate.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay. The next item is community board appointments. And the first person on this is John Proff.
So before we get to the appointments, I had pointed out to Tony on this one in particular. We went back and forth a little bit today. I don't believe this was publicly posted. It's a pretty important committee, so I think we had a little bit of a process hiccup. And it's a pretty important committee. However, after we texted back and forth, I went back and had to refresh my memory. We actually had an opening last year, which was the job of the town moderator to appoint. So first of all, my question is, we're sure this particular position is to be appointed by the select board? We have confirmed that?
Yes.
Okay, that's good. Second, more than one candidate came forward and expressed interest. And I did not have an opportunity to communicate that to you today. That's why I'm a little bit uncomfortable with, not that this person is not 100% qualified, but the other candidate was very qualified as well. So I'm just a little bit uncomfortable with not posting it a couple of weeks. Just, you know, give anybody who's served on a board or whatever time to apply and just vote in our next meeting. I just, it's an important committee, so I'm just, I'm a little uncomfortable, especially since somebody else, you know, expressed interest before.
I wasn't aware that there was someone else.
And I didn't remember, I apologize.
So I can't, so then the next part of the conversation that we had was, you know, in a scenario where we have one spot, one seat and multiple candidates, would the board want me to do the interviewing? Or would you, would the board like to do that interviewing?
Oh, I have a question first. Is this a person, you're the only person that knows this person was interested?
No, I believe they had reached out to Ellen Wilson. It was my understanding. I didn't, I was actually going to pick up the phone and call the person today, but I didn't want to do that, because if we're not going to publicly post it, I don't want to throw the pot. But I just, I am like 99.9% sure that person contacted Ellen.
I think I, I think I know who the speaker is, and I know she had expressed an interest in the position. This was a while ago.
Well, when it's for finance committee does not meet again until November 20th.
Oh, okay.
So we have another meeting November 3rd. And I think there's time to post if we start the meeting.
Yeah, I just, I would feel uncomfortable, because I would feel if I was that person and somebody else was hopped over, I would not, if that's okay.
How, so how did we end up with it and not the town moderator? What happened there? What changed there?
Some of the finance committee positions are appointed by the moderator and some by the select board. Tom Perkins, Perkins is moved out of town, so his seat, he was appointed by the select board previously.
Oh, yeah, okay.
And his term ends in June.
Yeah.
So the candidate came to us from the chair of the finance committee, I believe, through that process. And so, because it was a select board appointment.
Right, I didn't, yeah, I didn't realize.
So we can post it and then, I guess, just let me know if you want me to do the interview if the other person comes forward formally, or if you want to interview the both.
I think, I thought, and I could be remembering this wrong. I thought we did authorize Tony to kind of do interviewing for advisory committees, but not the adjudicatory ones. Finance is an adjudicatory committee. So I don't think we specifically talked about what to do if there were multiple applicants for an opening on an adjudicatory committee. You know, the finance committee does advise us, but because they by law, by state law, have specific responsibilities, that makes them different than downtown improvement and bike and ped. And so they, we had classified them a couple of years ago as an adjudicatory committee, and we treat them a little bit differently. But I don't think we gave Tony guidance on what to do in this situation.
If I was unclear, maybe I misunderstood. I thought it was, you know, across the board, if we had an open seat and we had candidates for them, that I would do the initial interview and then make a recommendation.
That's what I thought, I didn't know.
I'm sorry, I thought we did it just for advisory.
Just a process efficiency thing. But we can revisit that as well.
No, I think that you've already, actually, you've already interviewed one candidate. In this particular case, might as well interview the second.
I'm just also looking at the schedule. There are two slots that come up in June for 2026. Okay, now, I assume, I assume the other one is probably unappointed. I don't think they'd have two, it's probably one of each, so one is a moderator. And I think that's probably the slot that, it was Mike Pratt, and Mike Pratt was replaced by Gar.
Yes, right.
So those are the two slots that are, one that's open right now.
But based on our process, not every slot is publicly posted. Someone has to complete, I thought it was two terms before we publicly post the opening. So I guess, Tony, it would be good for you to go review our, not a regulation, select board regulation. I forget what we call it. I tried looking for it and I couldn't find it by doing a search on the website. So I personally would appreciate a link to our town policies that are bylaws, but I couldn't find it. But we actually went through this whole discussion a couple of years ago and spelled out which, when we publicly post and don't. So, because we don't want to kick people out after one term if they've done a good job, and we don't want them to have to go through an arduous process. But we specified some things in there and we talked about it for quite a while. But like I said, I tried to find it, I couldn't.
So I'll post, we'll post that the, that there's a vacancy up, you know, for a term expiring in June. And if anyone else submits interest, I'll meet with them before our next select board meeting. And go from there.
I, like Kathy, I think this is a particularly.
It's an important appointment. Do you want to, do you want to go interview him? Because you are the liaison. We also talked about that as well. You were the liaison, could you jointly interview him?
If that's agree with you.
Absolutely.
Okay, just let me know when it is, I will be there.
Yeah, the other thing I would offer as a suggestion is, you know, Tom is leaving with specific skills he brought to the committee. I don't feel I know him well enough to know what that gap is that we're trying to fill. So, you know, might have a conversation about that.
With Sarah?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, so do you want to skip the finance committee one? Let's.
Yeah.
Yes. The next appointment is Brian Pray for the one man, Reed, Manchester Housing Authority.
So this was post, this has been posted. It's actually a, an elected seat. So when a vacancy occurs outside of the election cycle, we have to follow Chapter 41, Section 11, which I double-checked to make sure it wasn't a joint vote between us and the housing authority. This is just a vote of the select board to fill the remaining term. And I, it was posted for quite some time, didn't have a ton of interest. Brian submitted his letter of interest. He currently serves on the planning board. He moved to town about four years ago. He has a public affairs background, specifically with housing development projects from the private side. He's also a member of bike and ped. He understands the additional commitment and is willing to serve and has the ability to, you know, meet the need of the committee. So I recommend Brian to be appointed to fill the seat. He may be on, yes, he's on.
He's on there? We don't see him, but we see a name.
Hi, men and members of the select board. Thank you all. I'm passionate about both senior housing and public housing, portable housing. And I think my background and my commitment to the community through current involvements in the planning board and bike and pedestrian committee would be a huge asset to the housing authority. And I have met with the chair, Elaine, and attended a meeting to kind of get the scope and lay the land of the housing authority board. And the current situation is there. And I would, I would serve the board and the community and look forward to bettering the community and public housing.
Would it be your intention to run when your term, when your appointed term ends?
Remind me when this term would end?
I believe this term, this goes until May 19th. I think the way that, because of the way this works is that the appointment fills the term until the next election cycle. And then the remaining years of the term that they're filling is up for election. I think is how it works.
So Brian's got a good question here.
And he hold two elected positions?
Unless, I believe so. I don't think, as a select board member, you can do that, but I don't know if there's an issue with the planning board.
Because I went through this when I was on the ZBIA. I couldn't be appointed now, because I'm an appointing authority. Like you, you're still held on to your.
Yeah, the HCC, yeah.
Because you had it before you got on. Now, I'm just concerned, maybe that's.
I think as long as it's not a paid position.
Well, I think what Brian is getting at is he would not be able to be appointed to the ZBIA because the appointing authority is the select board. He wouldn't be able to appoint himself, right?
I just want to make sure that.
He was grandfathered in.
That one individual can hold two elected positions in this same town.
Right, that's a good question.
And that's just, that's just my only concern. I think Brian is very qualified and I'd love to have him on. I just don't want to do something that's going to put the position, and we'll be talking about this in two months when the state gets a hold of this. But who's going to tell the state?
Oh, somebody will.
I'm just quickly looking at, to see if it says anything in our general bylaws about the planning board.
So what if we were to take a vote and just make it conditioned on your.
So long as it's permitted, yeah.
Yeah, it is permitted. Your confirmation that it is allowed by law.
Yeah.
We do that. The committee needs to help, yeah.
It's very difficult for us to, you get it for the.
Right.
Okay, since this, at the moment, is an appointed office.
Right.
I think, okay, that's a slightly complicated motion.
It's my motion too.
Yes, right.
So.
I'll just add to the end of it, subject to the town administrator confirming that.
This is, this is a legal, a legal appointment?
Yeah.
All right. I make that motion? I move that the board appoint Brian Pray to the Manchester Housing Authority for a term until the next annual town election on May 19th, 2026, subject to the town administrator confirming that this is a legal appointment.
Second. Oh, Jeff?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Kathy says yes.
John, yes.
Tony, according to ChatGPT, it's okay.
Thank you for stepping up, Brian, thank you.
Thank you all.
Welcome aboard. Thank you.
Chuck's the one who taught me all about ChatGPT.
Cultural Council.
Cultural Council, we seem to have four.
Yes.
Excellent.
How many open, there's four open?
So I actually did the research, it's nine positions are allowed on this council?
Six to 15, according to the bylaw. And three openings have been advertised on our website. So I imagine, I imagine there's probably has been nine in the past.
Yeah, well, we did the inventory a couple of years ago. I was upset, there were nine, but there were like five openings. I mean, it's been a very difficult council to fill, so this is terrific.
Yeah. So I met with, so Miranda Gardett was really the, the initial person approached from members of the existing cultural council. And Miranda spoke with Kate Reed and Martha Chapman and Debbie Pine about the cultural council, and all four come with really great background and they are very passionate and eager to get involved. Miranda's been a lifelong resident. She worked for Manchester Museum as an art background. Her mother actually started the recycling program here in town. Debbie's a long-term resident since 1972. She was previously a science teacher in Melrose, has grant writing experience, currently is a reading specialist at the Memorial Elementary. Martha Chapman has been a resident since 1970. She previously was an art teacher at Ayers Elementary in Beverly. Previously worked at the Manchester Museum, currently helps teach in park and rec programs geared towards youth and adults. And Kate Reed grew up in Marblehead, but she has 22 years of experience as a teacher. She's a library assistant at Memorial Elementary School currently. And like I said, all four of them are really excited about joining, joining the council and bringing their new, a new perspective.
Hi, guys. We're all really excited. You know, I think, I think for us, I think, you know, we saw the success of the last summer of the rotunda project that we put on and just how it really galvanized the community and seeing all the different interpretations of our, you know, famous rotunda. You can go into my daughter's elementary school and all the students' projects are still hanging up on the wall, all their different, different black and white drawings. And, you know, I think this is a chance for the cultural council to not only teach people about our history of the town and the surrounding area through art and science, but also to really kind of get the younger community involved in more fun activities too. So it doesn't all, we can have all of the, you know, all the art exhibits and all the speakers, but we can also do things that are fun, that really will bring the community together. And I'll say, I think, I think our first order of business is, you know, in speaking with the state, we haven't done, I think, to your point earlier about how it's been a tough council to fill, all of us are really eager to get community input, and that is actually part of our state guidelines. They asked us when we had last done community input, and it spent some time. So I think, you know, our first order of business is to work on getting together a survey or something that we can share, either, you know, in coordination with you all and sort of get out to the community about how we could be helpful and what types of programs they would like to see, you know. Our grant cycle just closed on the 16th, so we have until January to review our grants. We have about $5,700 from the state. Uh, we have about fifty-seven hundred dollars from the state. Um, and so far we have about eight submissions, um, some repeat people, obviously from First Parish Church, P T O, things like that. So it will be really exciting, but I think our first order of business will be to, to do that. Well, our first order of business is participating in the, uh, Wobbling Goblin Walk with some candy to say hello. But, um, uh, then it will be to try and, and get a survey and talk to the community and get our name out there.
Great. Um, anyone else? Martha? Kathy? Yeah, just, you have anything to add? Martha, Debbie, Kate?
Okay, go. We're all just really excited to add to what's already great about Manchester and to invite more people to get to know who's in town and just bring some more experiences in. Anything we're gonna say, Jake, oh, fine.
Um.
Yep.
I move the board appoint Miranda Gardet to the cultural council for a term to expire on June twentieth, two thousand twenty-seven.
Second.
Friendly Amendment, June thirtieth. Twentieth. It's recorded.
You're on the thirtieth.
You're on a school committee?
Second. Second. I'll second, I'll second.
Jeff?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Kathy says yes.
And John, yes.
Okay. Um.
And then what, and then?
And then Brian?
I'm gonna see if I can do this right. Let me show you how it's done. I move that the board appoint Kate Reed, Martha Chapman and Debbie Pine to the cultural council for terms to expire on June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-eight.
Second.
John?
Yes.
Kathy says yes. Kathy?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And Jeff?
I'm gonna sublet my motions to you from now on.
Thank you all for trying and, and enthusiasm for, for improving the awareness of culture, of the culture of Manchester. And, improving it. Thank you.
Yeah, we do.
Bye-bye.
Bye.
Bye-bye.
Okay. Um. The consent agenda consists of the, yes.
I didn't read that.
Make a motion?
You're no retriever tonight.
Just curious. He just touched on the highlights. I move the select board approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Deep into weeds with those notes.
Okay, Jeff?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Kathy says yes.
John, yes.
Very good. Um, I skipped over.
Yeah, that's why.
I skipped over a lot of things, actually. Town administrator goals.
So I sent, uh, the draft version of goals and objectives for July twenty-five to June twenty-sixth, uh, over to you last week and trying to, um, some, some of the things that we talked about during our retreat, um, some of the key projects and some of the, uh, priorities that we all discussed and identified. And wondering if you'd have any feedback on that or, um, comments or, if, or if you want to, uh, vote to approve.
Have to approve this?
Yeah.
Um, yeah, I went through all this. Actually, the first two-thirds is a position description rather than goals. I pulled out all the goals. They're only in the last, uh,
Yes.
three or four where they were specific. I assumed that for all of them, and for goals, you really need kind of timelines or something. This is twenty-seven, no, twenty-five to June twenty-sixth. So really the goal is by June twenty-sixth, yeah, this is where I want to be. So, but in the future, you don't have to put all of this together.
Yeah.
Really, you just need the last, I put arrows in front of, I don't know, one, two, three, four, five, six, six, six goals.
Okay.
So we're down at the end. It was under budget, it was number four.
Let's see if we are.
And five. Okay.
Well, I guess a little, I, I, I agree with the concept. I'm not sure I agree on the individual.
Okay.
So we can, we can discuss philosophy here.
Infrastructure, I had one, three and five, sure, sure, surely were there. I thought there ought to be a little more focus on P P S, because I think that's going to kind of rise to the top a little bit here.
I think you have an update on that, don't we?
Uh, that's coming, yeah, and I'm, I'm doing that in a vacuum, so I don't know what the story is quite with that. So I, I mean, I don't know that I necessarily want to get into the weeds on all of this.
I, I agree with John. Um, the way, first of all, very comprehensive. I didn't touch anything that was missing. It was more, less is more, right? So, um, in the past, the way I, I've been taught to think about these is, you know, there's, there's your day job, right? And all that stuff is in your contract. We expect you to do a good job at certain things. Those types of what I call motherhood and apple pie activities, you don't need to put them in your goals. The goals are things that you, like John said, a project or some type of other change that you're looking to drive. So, um, you know, um, I would think of it in those terms, because then you can probably cut half of them. So for example, um, um, on the, on the government administration piece, you know, anytime you see the support items, like support the housing initiatives, housing's important, but what is Tony gonna do as a town administrator for that? You know, is there something in particular you need to drive? If not, then it's part of your day job, you know, so I just would think of it that way. Um, on the, on the communication side, you know, I think there are some things there that we, um, we do need to improve. We always need to improve. Uh, like number one, I, I would keep that in there. We always need to improve, you know, access to information. I think that's good. But the other two that are there, it's like, eh, that's your day job, you know, you do a good job at that. And, um, under the budget and finance, I thought, you know, number two is good and five and six. Um, the others seem to be, you know, again, part of your day job. You keep them or not, it's up to you. When we get down into the infrastructure, I, I agree with John. This is where the meat of, uh, a lot of projects are. Uh, but number four, you know, that's kind of your day job to work with. General, anytime you see yourself using the word generally or kind of continuing, that's might be a little bit of a flag that, oh, that's part of my day job. Do I need to include it or not? So I would just look at it that way, but I thought they were very comprehensive and, and thank you for going in all together.
And with regard to Kathy's comments, the only thing that I would add that she did not mention is number four and a budget.
Yes.
That's a very important thing. I mean, that's to develop, you know, develop a balanced budget that addresses the, I don't know, cost pressures, et cetera. But that certainly is in this fiscal year, so. But, and Kathy says it's all there.
Yeah, you basically filled up a blue book in college.
Well, I'll shrink it down.
Throw it up, should've got the.
Some more, uh, like P P S, I'll add to.
I, I, I think that's.
I think P P S, I didn't catch that yet.
Specific. Specific.
Yeah, yeah, specific, uh, you know, projects or objectives.
Happy to, happy to come in, you know, with too much and be told to shrink it down, then come in with less, so.
I just want to amend that. Did you even have blue books when you were in school?
I, it goes back. I don't even think I had, uh, maybe middle school.
Yeah, I do. I do.
And you threw enough shit against there and hopefully, uh.
Um, just, just another thought, the, um, the one reason for slimming down the goals is our focus, right? So we know what we're gonna focus on, because the next step is usually priorities, right? Um, so if there, there may be some, they're, they're all not necessarily created equal. Some might be a high priority, others may be more of a stretch goal that, you know, if we don't get it done by the end of the year, you know, we're not gonna fall apart. So think of it in those terms. That's one of the reasons for slowing it down.
Yes. I would like to see a, a priorities list.
Yeah. It can even just be a high, medium, you know.
Stretch goals.
Yeah.
Kind of thing, whatever, however you wanna phrase it.
Because everyone has their priorities and you have to just figure out what's the best interest of the town as far as their priorities go.
And that's a good way for us to know what's on your mind and for us to talk about it, because if you say it sounds a high priority and we're like, eh, I don't know about that, then we know we're not on the same page.
Yeah, well, likewise, I like to know, I like to know what your priorities are too, uh, so that I'm staying on, you know, the, staying on track with those and we're all aware of that. Obviously, things come up and, um, there's not enough time in the day to get every, every single thing done. But, um, understanding what your priorities are, what I believe, you know, our priority should be, coming to an agreement on that helps guide the rest of the year.
So, I don't know, okay, then we, we want Tony to come back and give us a one-pager with about six bullets or seven?
Well, I, I think he should go through, he has a good list. I don't, I don't necessarily feel the need to change his list other than eliminate some things.
Yeah.
And, and maybe just come back with which ones he thinks, he can annotate a list, which ones he thinks are the highest priority. We can have a good conversation.
That's all we need.
Yeah.
Because I don't want to.
Just edit it down.
Spend a lot of time on this.
Yep.
Just edit it down.
We all know that he's serving the best interest of the community. So that's not, that's not in question at all. Just want to see where on a list of what's happening and what's.
Do you want to know? I put arrows in front of them.
Yeah, I'll take it. All right, thank you.
Okay, so, um, I don't think we need to move on anything, um, except we'll put this on the activities.
Oh, yeah, the action list.
Action list for, yeah. Right, well, then I'm looking at the, we get the motions, I will go back to the actual agenda. And the next thing is liaison update. Jeff?
Um, Howard Advisory met and the, uh, they had a conversation with the town accountant over the enterprise fund. It looks like we'll probably have a recommendation to us to move that forward coming some point in the near future. Uh, planning board continues to work on, um, downtown zoning and right now they're working on plans for public outreach over that. And I spent several nights at Essex Tech over the last couple of weeks, um, going over the lottery situation.
Oh, yeah.
And what the board voted, the plan the board voted on for us, I'll just go over Manchester's end of it, because I could spend three nights here doing this, so. Basically, what's gonna happen is we're gonna have a five-person minimum. No, there's no maximums in any of these plans. There'll be a five-person minimum per year. So in four years' time, that could put us at twenty.
I know, it's five, five new kids each year.
Five new kids in every class, right?
How many we got there now?
With, I think I was talking to Murray the other night. I think we're gonna be right around ten, eleven.
Across all four classes?
Yeah.
Okay.
And we won't really know for a couple more weeks, but.
It was a good group that graduated.
Yeah, there was a bunch that graduated over the last couple of years. And then we had a couple of years that were low and now it's starting to go the other way again, so it's, it's growing anyway, but. Um, so the lottery's gonna be three rounds. So what's gonna happen is we're gonna have our five and every kid that applies in this town will be in for that. So it'll be a lottery within your own town's apportionment, which will be the five.
But if you already have five kids there, everybody's.
This will be for the freshman class, so every year this is gonna happen.
Oh, five years, five for the freshman class?
Right.
Oh, oh, that's.
And then, so the first round will be within your town. Then round two is ten days later after school starts. So you have kids that don't show up, drop out, you know, whatever. This happens across the board for the first, oh, month or so. So in the first ten days, you, those seats will be filled by anybody else in your town that didn't get in on that lottery. Or there'll be another lottery and it'll get filled by your town. And round three will be anyone after that, that ten days who's waitlisted. Any town that doesn't use their apportionment, that's all gonna go into a pool. And then.
Increases your.
Everybody's gonna go into a pool and then they're just gonna, it's gonna get picked from that.
But that doesn't, so say it drops, if we only have three, one freshman year, the next year we still, we open up with five again.
Right.
Yeah, they don't say.
Every year you start with five, but you could, you could fill your five and then have, you know, let's say two kids waitlisted. Then they could go back into the ten days later pool, or they could go back into the, the all-over pool and get picked again.
This is like a really fair.
It's fair, but it's, it's, it's gonna be a lot better for us initially at being a small town, right? But overall, people think it's gonna hurt technical education and I do kind of agree with them because you're not picking kids on any sort of measurement. So you're not seeing this kid could really use this, this kid's in a situation where it's gonna benefit them, like, all that's out the window and you're just randomly picking.
Geography.
Yeah, so, so applications are out the window from the, the top list. The school doesn't get to choose your application.
Well, you, basically, there's a computer picking them. That's basically.
Oh, but pick four and you, yeah, or an interview.
Right, yeah, you'd have an interview and all that. So it's gonna be a work in progress. This is the first year and basically, what I was told is nothing's set in stone. And we can modify this if we need to. Like, one of my things was, you know, right now we don't need those numbers necessarily, but if we had a big M B A T A housing project go up, you know, like, a, a small town like us, our numbers, our need could double overnight based, you know, within a short amount of time.
So, yeah, how often are they gonna be?
So we can, right, so we're not, it's not set in stone, that's our number. That's our number for now. And then they can adjust based on our need down the road.
How big is the fish?
Five hundred and thirty-eight kids.
Oh.
And how many people have, in the past year or two, have competed for those spots? I mean, from all of the towns? No.
Oh.
For the whole.
About approximately fifteen to sixteen hundred.
All right, so only, they're only taking one in three, one in four, one in three. Okay. But at that point, they were looking at an applicant's qualifications or record, and I'm not sure what the criteria are. And now it's just.
There's, a lot of it's their need, you know, can, will it benefit them, you know, so, yeah, that's out the window.
Are they likely to continue in a trade beyond high school, I think, with.
All right. Well, it's an experiment.
So that's, that's where we're at.
Thank you. Ox and Red, uh, we have, they all have a meeting next, uh, a week in the morning, so. Currently, yeah, the, uh, childhouse, Huxpoint, uh, application process. And people can, kind of, like, to do a date, you know what's going on. Their summer one went really well, we'll get the numbers from them later, but so far their summer one fell. Now we're currently getting ready for, uh, the, the Wobbling Goblin Walk on Saturday to meet kids. Uh, we're not. Uh, the, uh, after-school program is running. There's, you know, Heather's spending a lot of time back there. Things afloat and, so that's her first level, I'm just ready to move on from that. Then, um, getting ready for basketball in the winter season.
Who is the program is or you are?
Well, I, I was on the court a couple of weeks ago and I need to get ready better than I. It was a time I could beat a fourth grader down the court. God only know what high school, well, high school camp dance going through persons, so it's gonna be easier. Uh, but no, the, uh, they'll be posting, I think, uh, and taking the applications, uh, the end of this week, first of next week. Uh, the draft and then, uh, season starts the first of December. And then. And then, we'll see how I am the second week of December. And the high school season starts, uh, the first, the second week as far as school is just going to come. Yeah, that's all of her, uh, Fox and Red. I don't have anything else because they're not meeting again next week. On this.
Um, let's see, well, we already talked about downtown improvement. The only other thing I'll mention there is they, um, so Mark Resnick came into the meeting, gave them a, a nice overview of the proposed downtown zoning districts that are being worked by the Planning Board. Um, he received a lot of feedback from that committee, so I'm sure, um, you know, that will be, uh, you know, they'll be very engaged when the public, you know, conversations start to happen. Um, I missed the Bike and Ped meeting, it was an in-person meeting last week. Um, so I'll, I don't know what happened there. But, uh, they did reach out to me because I had asked them to, um, consider giving us some advice. They're an advisory committee on the, the snow plowing. We're scheduled on our action list to talk about expectations around the plowing of the sidewalks. Um, and they're our pedestrian voice. So they reached out to me today and they're, um, I think they're gonna discuss that at their next meeting to give us some, you know, the good, bad, and, you know, suggestions as, as they see fit. Um, I think that is it.
DPW, it's all about asphalt. Mill Street to the bridge, Forest Street, the end of it, Forest Lane to the first house. Beach Street, I think we've already touched on that, I think we did. I think we did, okay. Beach, the beach, uh, Beach Street sidewalk. Old Essex Road, the first part where they dug everything up for water. And Pine Street from the, uh, one-twenty-eight interchange all the way past the transfer station to the water treatment plant.
Really?
So that's an extra fifty yards, fifty, I would say that's probably half of the dirt. They were, they're planning to go to, uh, the water treatment plant. So, and Colburn Road to Dexter Pond.
I don't know if that next part is officially happening yet or not. I think that's our, our desire is to.
Was that right?
Far, uh, we may need to.
Talk to some people?
Talk, yeah, we may need to, I don't know if it, if we need to build a con- conservation commission or anything like that yet. Certainly for the part that's already pavement, replacing, that's not an issue, but any new, we may need to.
That's an extra fifty yards and it would be.
But it would be really helpful, uh, for our access in and out of the water treatment.
Yes.
Yeah.
I don't like to go there because I feel like tiresome, I will.
Um, York District Commission did not have a meeting, uh, this month. I assume you might comment on seniors, you're probably more upon some of the issues than I am there with regard to the agreement, et cetera. Um, but there was a, uh, charrette, I guess, that was last week with regard to the senior, uh, the, uh, plot plan and building, and there were probably, I don't know, twenty-five people there or something like that. And then the library had its, the trustees had their meeting this past Friday. I think I mentioned they've got to do an ADA bathroom and there was some discussion about what kind of a changing table you need. I think they are planning to have a, kind of an adult or larger child changing table that is more like a platform that electrically goes up and down. But it will only take, the good news is it's only gonna take probably eight or ten more square feet. So it's not a significant change in the requirements base. I think their initial reaction was, God, we're gonna have to double the size of the bathroom, but that's not the case. I guess the bathroom might be, instead of eighty square feet, it will be ninety square feet or something.
And have to turn a wheelchair on?
Yeah, well, it, it was normally, but if you put this changing table in there, which cannot, you know, the regular ones for, for infants fold up against the wall. No, it's like a dental chair, just sitting there. It, it may be attached to the wall, but it's down flat and it stays that way. So that takes extra space.
Plenty of tables in the library.
When was the last time you were in the library?
This, when you walk in the library, it's left, there's a big table.
So anyway, that was, uh, the, we saw, I saw a couple of plans that they've got draft plans that Olson Lewis put together, and it looks like it's feasible without going crazy. The cost would go up a little bit, but it really is just largely due to the table itself, which is, I don't know, ten thousand dollars. Relative to the whole project is not a tremendous amount of money.
I remember the days changing my chair on the bathroom floor and trying to change.
Okay. That was before these ba, these, these, these rigs, you didn't do it in the bar.
He didn't say he didn't though, did he?
That's true, since I didn't think about it.
Okay.
Um, school committee, um, as you may have heard, the school committee, the school department, um, had a slap for excessive use of, or use of school, um, revenue toward a ballot issue. Um, that seemed odd because they had much higher standards than, than we had. But someone asked, there was a complaint and the result is really good. Um, they said, you shouldn't have done that and there is no penalty. And the next time there is an elect, an election where the school budget or anything else involving the school, come and tell us what you're going to do and we'll tell you ahead of time whether it works or not. So they have made a contact that will give, that will give them information. Um, um, that, there's an awful lot of other things that are, that are going on, um. But, uh, essentially, the only thing I, uh, I'd be of interest to us is they do an annual survey, an annual survey anonymously of, um, dangerous behaviors of kids. And over the past three or four years, kids are reporting fewer dangerous behaviors than they, than they did in the past. Whether that's, um, there was no conclusion as to exactly why, but, um, that seemed like good news. The Essex Elementary Building Program, they're currently scheduled for a vote in November twenty-sixth. They're going ahead with the project. They are looking currently, still looking to decide, um, where to put the school and how many grades to put in the school, if any.
But they, they decided against a renovation though, right? They're gonna do a totally new school?
They have not, they have not decided against the renovation yet. But, um, renovation obviously wouldn't be in the current location.
Right, right.
Um, the only alternative site is Apple Street, which would require the, um, town to pay for bringing water sewer and, and improving the roads. And there's no reimbursement from the state for that.
It's up road.
Yeah, it's up road.
Up road.
Um. And, uh, that, essentially, they're, they are, they are considering K through five in Essex, probably pre-K through five in Essex, pre-K through three in Essex, and to see what would be required to move the whole elementary school. The latter two would require change to the municipal agreement, which would require a town, two-town vote. That's good, they're looking at options.
Yeah.
Yes.
Pre-K to five is what exists right now, so they got the other two scenarios.
It's only K through five.
Excuse me?
Pre-K goes, goes, all goes to Manchester.
Oh.
At least I think so. Um, the Board of Health, um, that approved the, so, also talked about the situation at, at New Desmond, which is the gates. And, um, eventually, um, the Gates lawyer suggested that the standard of, um, the sanitary code that they were applying was appropriate for buildings that were being lived in and directed at landlords rather than people themselves. And their lawyer, the, um, Board of Health could, eventually concurred that they need to make the, um, area safe, um, for people who are working in the building, meaning they have to have, uh, smoke and carbon monoxide, they have to get rid of the, um, clutter, and they have to repair the wall on the, by the sidewalk. The rest of the sanitary code can wait until they apply for, um, documents. That's good news.
Yeah.
That is. They, they, there is still, if they, they need to have fixed, required things, um, by, by, um, um, in the next year, month, um, uh, or else they will resume with the, the vote proceedings. But the, the intention, the expectation is that they will manage to get the clutter and the, the broken fire detectors and the wall.
Good.
Which, that's good, um. Uh, the Finance Committee met for the first time. They're, they were looking at, um, year-end report, um, they're trying to figure out why parks and park revenue was down and, um, what the state of the launch revenue is. Um, but mostly, um, they were bringing everybody up to speed on what the Finance Committee does. There is at least one new member. The question was, uh, raised as how do we have, they have a lot of money left over the year for sidewalks? But they will figure that. That's it. Minister.
Okay, um, a couple of quick things before those that are listed on the agenda. The COA Director position, we've, uh, we've had twelve candidates apply and we're moving into interview process over the next, uh, this week and next week. I bet, I believe the special act for Town Administrator requires a department head position to be, uh, confirmed by the Select Board. Is the COA, the COA Director, um, position one that?
I thought you restructured so that there's someone above that person now? Or does this person report to you?
They'll report, direct line to me, dotted line to the, uh, to the Health and Human Services team.
I didn't think that's how it's gonna be. If it's direct line to you, then I do think we need to confirm the appointment. I mean, if that's, if that's what the bylaws says.
And, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, pretty sure that's what it says. So that, that, we may be doing that at the next meeting or the second meeting in November. Um, still working on scheduling a meeting with the Masons for condo docs and the two attorneys, ours and theirs, uh, to make progress on that. As far as budget prep or town meeting prep goes, we've, uh, received requests from department heads for capital and we're reviewing those now. Uh, we'll be asking department heads to provide their operational requests over the coming weeks. Hopefully, uh, we have an update to provide to the Finance Committee mid-November. Uh, I met with, uh, Mike Chapman and got an update on, got the update for Winterfield. This was another element of, uh, efficiency that we talked about. Uh, so I will forward, uh, to the Select Board the update that they provided, uh, that he provided to me, but they are in good shape. Um, and I have, uh, a breakdown of their budget and what their top issues are. I can send it over to you. Uh, we also met with, um, Chuck and I, um, and Sue and Nate. We've met with, um, our Northeast Regional Director for MVP. The town is required to apply for MVP two-point-O this year.
Sorry, what's that?
Minnesota Vulnerability Preparedness. The town did a lot of work to become designated as a MVP community in the past. The state has now changed the program two-point-O. And if we want to maintain our status, we have to apply for two-point-O this year. Uh, so we're working to understand the benefits of maintaining the status uh, and what the process is to go through that. It's a two-year process, uh, three phases. Phase one and two are in year one, phase three in year two. It does seem like there's more benefit for us as a community to apply for two-point-O, uh, regionally with Rockport and Gloucester, uh, and potentially Essex. They're due to apply as well. Um, and then by applying, applying for two-point-O, we have the ability to apply for an action grant under MVP in the upcoming cycle. Uh, a, uh, a single town application has a max of three million dollars for, for that action grant. Regional is five million dollars. And we're looking at it as a potential backup, uh, funding source for Central Street Culver in case things don't work out with, right, extension.
So that's five million over all the towns though, right?
Nope, it would be for the project itself. It doesn't have any negative impact.
But if you're, if you're, so you're going regionally, but is, that's five million over that whole region, right?
No, it's only for that specific project. Our, our angle is that it's a regional benefit. And the key there for us is the electrical conduit that goes through this, through the system.
Okay.
The project would occur in Manchester, but if it's not done.
Yeah, then they got.
Or it's in Summers.
No, like, community problems down the line.
It doesn't negatively impact their ability to apply for action grants on their own. Uh, they don't have to put any funding in as a match, uh, to join us as the re, as a regional application. We would have to do public outreach, um, communication, education about the grant and the importance of it in all the towns, uh, but the grant can actually fund the cost of that. And we could use the NOAA grant that we have as our match portion, uh, do that, to the MVP grant. So it could be a good opportunity, a good backup opportunity for us. Um, and I've already spoken with Gloucester, Rockport and Essex about it and they all seem to be on board so far, so good.
And they, the, would, which towns would suffer? Definitely Gloucester, Rockport.
Definitely those, uh, I think we could, I think it'd be a good idea to bring Essex in because of the school system.
Oh, right, okay, yep, yep, that's smart, yeah.
Not necessarily, uh, a huge, like, mover of the needle as far as how competitive we would be as a region.
But they might be willing to help. Advocate for it.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Awesome, that's great.
Um. Uh, I also spoke with those three communities as well. We have, uh, about our Comcast contract that, which is up and we have to go through a renegotiation process. Um, it was really nothing for us to do at the moment, but started to chat about what that process looked like. And as it moves forward, we will make sure that, I mean, really Comcast is required to do all the public advertising of any type of meetings or, um, contract negotiation pieces. And then I forwarded you today, uh, we got the second response from the Attorney General on the, uh, ADU bylaws that were voted on at town meeting. Haven't had a chance, it's, it's.
It's long.
It's long. Um, but the summary of it really is that, uh, Article, Article nine, um, was accepted in full. Article eight is accepted partially. There were some, some issues with Article eight, um, that had to deal with the language related to a permanent foundation and mobile home prohibition. Uh, you might recall that was a floor amendment that came up during the discussion. So that wasn't really something that had been part of like the Planning Board's review process previously to that. Uh, there's a, an issue with the minimum of a six-month lease period on an ADU. And then dimensional requirements imposing the same setback requirements on ADU as those imposed on the primary building. So, does, they explain in this, uh, at length what. So does, they explain in this, uh, at length what the issues are. I have not, I have not fully reviewed it yet, but we did get our, you know, communication from Attorney General today on that.
I assume that's been forwarded to the planning board.
Yes, yes.
And so they're looking for a response?
No, when the, when the Attorney General makes a decision, essentially they just say, this cannot be included in your newly published zoning bylaw. So we, so Christine will work with, find out clearly from the Attorney General what the new bylaw that she publishes is allowed to say, right? Eliminating the part of these parts of, that are issues. For some of these that, the reason they, uh, deleted them from our, the reason the Attorney General deleted them is because they were unclear as to what the town meant or what our, the town's intent was. I've read that a little bit in there. So I think it's possible that if we wanted to revisit those issues, we could, um.
So it's not required though that we revisit them at a town meeting?
Correct.
The town clerk can just publish them with the edits from the Attorney General?
Correct.
Okay.
And then we could come back?
Right.
And say, here's a clarification and I'll be, that with regard to.
Well, on the subject of town meeting, um, is it possible, you guys did a great job of that timeline while we were thinking about a fall town meeting. Can we get one for the annual town meeting?
Absolutely. I saw your email on that.
Yeah, that would be good.
And I, I had shared, I shared that special town meeting version with the finance committee, uh, when we met with them too and talked about how we were gonna update that for.
Well, some of the stuff may come from them, but some of the stuff we put on the warrant had nothing to do with finance.
Yep.
Yeah, okay. Awesome.
All right, so then, uh, Chuck is here as well, um, uh, on the meeting, uh, to participate in our discussion about Ocean Street and PFAS. As far as Ocean Street goes, uh, we've received a proposal, we're working on putting together the, uh, purchase order so we can move forward with Fasson O'Neil, um, for, uh, a vulnerability assessment and conceptual planning services for Ocean Street. The vulnerability assessment is to evaluate current and future coastal flood risk, plan and facilitate a proactive community planning workshop and design charrette and deliver conceptual planning alternatives. The project is a critical step in identifying feasible adaptation strategies for the future of Ocean Street that have support from the community and position the town to pursue additional funds to implement long-term risk reduction solutions. So this has been an item on our action list for quite some time. There's a number of, you know, public engagement elements to this. I, I don't know if I actually forwarded this proposal over to you or not.
No, but more importantly, have you forwarded to the community that's been asking for action on it?
No, I haven't. I mean, I, I, but I, I believe it captures what their.
Right. It, what you read off sounds good, but I think the primary feedback I consistently get from the community is they wanted, they were happy to get the $100,000 approved at town meeting for, for coming up with options, but they wanted to have input before that money was spent because they feel they got burned the last time we went in for a grant. It was like a couple of years ago and the grant proposal didn't, it wasn't what they thought it was gonna be. So, so I just, um, I, I think in this particular sensitive situation, over-communicating is better than assuming people are on the same page. So I would encourage you to even, not just send it to us, but Chuck probably has an email list of folks, hey, here's what we're thinking of moving forward, you know, maybe even schedule a meeting with them or at least give them an opportunity to provide feedback. I don't know.
I mean, generally speaking, I prefer not to have residents, you know, making edits to a scope and proposal.
Yeah.
Uh, but I, but I feel like I've gotten a good idea of what their concerns are and I believe that this proposal captures that. I'd be happy to double check and communicate with those residents.
That's all I'm suggesting.
Am I not send them?
You don't have to send them the whole proposal, but even what you just read, I mean, I think more communication is better.
Yep.
It's, it's been going on for years.
Yeah.
Eight years or nine years as far as.
Was it just more they didn't like what they heard?
No, I don't, I don't.
No, the, well, the, the study was canceled, the grant was, we backed away from the grant. I think the gar, the title of the grant included.
Abandoned.
A predetermined solution. It was not coming up with options. And so it really just set the whole conversation on a negative tone and we're trying to recover. Tony tried to recover, he's doing a good job, it's just.
We, we test number three, which is the, one of the larger phases of this, uh, scope. Uh, we put a lot of emphasis on what we heard and.
Right.
Includes a multi-day planning workshop and design charrette, uh, co-create alternative design concepts.
I don't have my glasses on, I see.
It's like a three-day workshop.
So it, is there gonna be a hard look into what is permissible?
Yes.
Because you can dream up whatever you want, but if you can't do it, it's useless.
Yes. Uh, what's permissible, uh, so what's feasible, what's permissible, what's grantable?
Right.
Um, what's acceptable by the town and the, and the neighbors? There's also, we've also asked them to do some additional research, maybe at the state level to see if, uh, if there's any pre-existing permitting or licenses from what was, you know, there, there's old seawalls down there that may have been gone through a chapter 91 license or a Army Corps design process 40 years ago that we don't, aren't aware of. And that could change what is permissible today if it's pre-existing. So we've asked them to do that research for us as well.
That's, that's, that's all awesome. I, I, like I said, it sounds good to me. I would just still suggest you guys meet with the residents, um, because I, that, that's a long-term, how to fix it long-term, which we absolutely need to do. There may be some short-term concerns or whatever, it would be good to hear them out. That's, that's my choose. And I, I, I'm sorry, I don't have my glasses on, I see a hand up there and I don't know who's.
That's Chuck.
Yeah, oh, it is.
Go ahead, Chuck. Yeah, so I guess I just wanted to chime in a little bit here, having a little bit of history, but we did, uh, you know, a lot of this scope that Tony just went over was from the grants that we were pursuing in the last 12 months, not the one from four or five years ago. I think it was actually more than that now. But, um, so like that has been a scope that we have pushed back and forth with the residents and others and, you know, other interested parties, uh, in town. And so I just want to say like that, we, we didn't really stray too far from that, it's just, we got, we're at the point now where we were not successful in getting a couple of different grants that we were hoping to get. And so we basically had to pare down those scopes to match our available budget, which is the hundred thousand that you referenced. And so like this is not a surprise or something new that, you know, those folks wouldn't have seen before. And actually, we did solicit several letters of support on that scope. So it's more of that, it's not something new or off the wall. So there, there is a little bit of history and back and forth, it's already happened.
I agree. I'm just suggesting when you have a sensitive situation with, with residents, a little over-communication can be better than, cause it's probably been months. I mean, you know, it wasn't yesterday, right? So people forget and it doesn't hurt.
Yeah. Yeah, so I'll, I'll push it, push something out to the, you know, folks that I've been keeping in touch with and let them know that it's coming back.
Thank you.
Uh, and then we'll keep everyone in, involved as, uh, you know, of, of course, their first kind of task in front of them is to do some data research, get some, go out there and actually do some engineering and understand like what, what is possible is kind of, so that our first public meeting is productive, uh, so.
So we have a sense as to how long that might take before, in addition to the communication you're gonna do in the near term, is, um, when might we expect them to complete enough work so we can have a true wide-open public meeting?
I'm just reading through the scope real quick to see if it talks to that, but this. We propose completing the task list in this agreement within an estimated period of nine months. So, um, the total is nine months, but I would, Chuck, did you get any sort of breakdown of that nine months or do you? Could you comment on that? We could ask them what they think each phase.
Yeah, I'll have to check back with them. I mean, it, it really comes down to how quickly we can execute the contract and get them doing the.
Yeah.
Data collection that you mentioned and modeling. I mean, that, that is a significant task that is gonna take, you know, I, I don't think we're gonna be back in a month to, you know, discuss the files and modeling. It's gonna be two months.
I think it sets expectations if, you know, it sounds like there's a lot in there in that proposal, but if there are different phases and we can set some expectations, this phase, this first phase is gonna take X amount of time and we can come back to you and share what we know.
Yeah.
I, I think that goes a long way towards helping people feel heard.
Yeah, agreed, yeah. Okay, and then Chuck, I will pass it to you for, um, an update on where we are with everything related to PFAS. Um, I know, or Kathy, you've, you've received, um, through the Facility Planning Committee meeting, an update on where Lincoln Street well project is, but, um, we don't have to go in that in-depth here, I think tonight, but Chuck, if you could give us a brief overview.
Right, so I think folks should know that we've done a lot of, uh, you know, testing and, uh, you know, conceptual designs at both of our facilities, uh, and then there's been, you know, a lot of regulatory uncertainty on, you know, the numbers and, you know, the, how we've gone about this over the last few years. Uh, right now where we are in the process is we have a, uh, MCL, uh, from EPA that is currently, you know, we need to be in compliance with that, uh, maximum contaminant limit by 2029. Uh, we have heard through the, you know, different EPA and whatnot with the Trump administration now, instead of Biden, that, um, you know, they are looking to add a couple of years to be in compliance, but they're not looking to, uh, you know, take back any of those requirements for the MCL itself. So for instance, if they do, uh, and they haven't done this yet, they just talked about it, you know, they might say, instead of being compliant in 2029, you know, you can have until 2031, something along those lines. Uh, we have, you know, Lincoln Street, uh, for us is ahead on design and development. Uh, one, they gave a maybe a grant last year to cover the design, so that, you know, that was one element of it, but it also has a higher, uh, PFAS concentration in the water at the well than what we see up at the treatment plant. Um, so, um, we are proceeding with that design. Um, you know, we, we did pilot and best scale test, uh, the different medias and different techniques for removing PFAS. Uh, you know, the kind of most economical and kind of most true is the GAK, the granular activated carbon filters. Um, to make the GAK effective, we will need to add, uh, Greentend as well to remove the iron mummies upstream of the PFAS removal that takes place in the GAK. So that's to say, we will need a, a new building at the Lincoln Street site and we've, you know, looked at kind of making sure it, you know, fits within that neighborhood and whatnot, but, you know, it will be a change. Uh, and then, um, you know, when we, when we are finished with that job, we will have , uh, water that is, uh, you know, PFAS three and we'll have certain intervals where we have to, you know, dispose of the media, change out the media and sort of these sort of things, but that's, you know, that's what we're working on. Um, you know, we're, we will have a 60% design by the end of off. We will be, um, hearing back, we did submit a PEF application, a product evaluation form to the state revolving fund to, um, you know, help fund the construction of that job. So we will hear back on that in January typically is when the IUP comes out, the Intensive Use Plan. When we, I had actually met a meeting last week to just see kind of what the status of the state's SRF programming is, you know, with the government shutdown and the, you know, as we saw with the BRIC program, how the, you know, the money is there and those not there and that stuff. Uh, but it does seem that a lot of the money that is scheduled or was scheduled for the 2026 timeframe, which is our timeframe for construction, will still be available. That was part of a different, you know, uh, legislation under Biden administration. So that's to say, you know, the, the suspected terms of a, uh, SRF project when we, for PFAS at the Lincoln Street site will be, um, you know, a 0% loan for 30 years and there'll likely be a element of debt forgiveness. So that's all, that's all very good for us. And then, you know, we are, we will also be looking to, um, you know, go to the full design for what the improvements will be needed at Gravelly Pond, um, at that facility. Um, we did get some good news in, uh, piloting and, uh, best scale testing, we did have media there. We won't, we won't need a new building, like we will have the well at Gravelly Pond, we will be able to, uh, you know, basically retrofit the existing filters and media, uh, to hopefully, or to, to be in compliance with the new MCL and to remove PFAS from the water. Uh, but the, the full design is, is not kind of headed out like we, like we are in the stage we're at with Lincoln Street. Um, so those are, I think, the high points. Uh, we will be, you know, this time next year, we'll be under construction and anticipate that at this year's town meeting, we will need an authorization for, um, bonding, uh, and, you know, the SRF language, uh, at town meeting. Um, unfortunately, the way things are with tariffs and, uh, just the market, the bidding market in general and to, you know, do the SRF is kind of a different standard of, um, construction methodology in terms of like there's requirements from the federal, uh, and the state on, you know, minority business requirements and dispossess business requirements as well as buy American requirements. So these types of things will have add costs, but it's still gonna be a net positive for the town, um, in terms of debt forgiveness and, uh, loan terms, so. Uh, so anyway, that's, uh, that's where we're at. It's, it's probably gonna be a 12 to $15 million project at Lincoln Street and then, you know, it could be another five to 10 million at Gravelly Pond when we're done. Uh, but, um, you know, we will have PFAS-free water, which will lead us in compliance, uh, with the, with the regulations.
But just on that, the, um, the feedback from a couple of members of the Facilities Planning Committee, um, including myself, just a couple of us, we, we did give the, um, consultants some feedback around focus on cleaning the water. Out of all the facilities we need to build, this one doesn't need to look like it fits on Central Street and be beautiful, okay? They had these nice designs with windows and, and it's like, nobody's gonna be in there, you know, working in the building. It's some place where people pop in for a couple hours or whatever, do their testing and they leave. So, you know, nat, natural light is good, have the windows up, but don't, it doesn't have to be real pretty. It has to, let's, let's save our dollars for cleaning the water and, and some of the other buildings. This is, this is a particular building where we can sacrifice a little bit of beauty to, yeah.
Fair reveal.
Yeah, exactly. It doesn't, it's hidden in the woods. I mean, it's, you know, it's not like, the front isn't, but you know.
Yep.
Right. So I think we took those comments and I think, you know, that's, that's not a high bar to hit is, uh, you know, making an ugly building. I've been on many projects where we've been accused of putting in ugly buildings and I don't even think we did yours as far as we call them.
No, no, we're good.
Just thinking.
Thank you, just thinking.
Five minutes listening to this stuff.
Yeah. So, so, so you're looking for, uh, big money this coming April?
Correct.
I assume this is being done in chunks, you're going after Lincoln Street first and then, cause that's the one with the higher, higher numbers anyway. And then, uh, and then after that, maybe a year later, then you start on Gravelly Pond or something like that?
Right, so, you know, discussing that with Tony and, you know, the, and the manager to kind of game plan it over the next, you know, several years is to, you know, I think we need to obviously get Lincoln Street done, um, but, um, you know, I, if we're asking for a big chunk of money this year for construction at Lincoln Street, you know, we should also keep in mind that we, you know, have a, another design effort that's gonna be, need to be undertaken, so we need to make sure that the funds are available there, you know, whether they be town funds or, and, you know, going for other grants or other, uh, monies that may be available for PFAS remediation, you know, there's lawsuit money and stuff like that, so, um, so anyway, we're just making sure that we have in mind that the big chunk of money will predominantly go this year for construction, but we also need to, you know, have the design and the pipeline. But we also need to, you know, have the design and the pipeline so that when we're done with construction on Lincoln Street, we can move right into construction on Gravelly Pond.
So, so you really wanna raise all the money in one shot because to try and sell it twice is a lot of effort and.
I, that's not what I heard. I mean, I think we'll have a construction plus design this year. The following, sometime later, we will have another construction.
Right, but are you gonna go for all the money now and then you'll just draw it down when you need it a few years out? Or are you gonna go in two different initiatives?
I think, I think it'll probably have to be two different initiatives because we will need the authorization for construction of Lincoln Street to, you know, to, to meet the SRF, you know, requirements until therefore. I mean, I guess it's not unheard of that we would, you know, after the whole thing at once, it's just that, that would, that's, as yet undefined, I would say, to, to, for me to give you like a great number on that. I think, uh, you know, we have a very good number on the construction costs for Lincoln Street. I can, I can get, you know, in the next few months, we can develop a scope for design at Gravelly Pond. But to, to try and plan the construction, you know, hit that number for Gravelly Pond a couple of years out right now is almost a fool's errand with, uh, you know, just the way things are fluctuating in the market conditions right now. So even if I have a number, I have to be extremely conservative. And that's not, you know, also that's double as short, I guess.
Okay, well, communications plan is gonna be important for that initiative, first, starting the first to next year or so.
Right.
Prior to the, prior to the annual meeting. I guess that's the most money, other than for schools, that's the most money this town will have to raise. And this is a story that a lot of people, everybody knows what the story is with a school, but this is a little more abstract.
I, I certainly with Chuck that it's hard to estimate the construction cost if you haven't done the design yet.
I think that was, Chuck, thank you for being here, Nate. Uh, I think that was a really good update. You, you hit on a lot of the different elements of, it's not an, it's not an easy pro, uh, topic. There's a lot, a lot to it. And, uh, Chuck and Nate and their team have done a lot of work on this and, um, I thought that was a pretty good, pretty good update there.
Yeah, it's good to know where we're, where we're headed, so.
There are lots of people who are interested and saying, I don't know.
What's happening? Yeah. Well, they're definitely gonna hear about it, uh, in the coming months as we start to gear up for town meeting.
Thank you, Chuck.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, all right. Have a good night, everybody.
You too. Have I forgotten? There a motion?
There is a motion. Is there a second?
Second. Move to adjourn. That was the motion? That was the motion? That's what I said.
All in favor?
Aye.
Well, I'm a person that saw it, it changed for me.
Oh, I noticed that. We can avoid using acronyms. We don't have.
No, we're not.
We don't use part, we don't have an acronym for parts and.
I saw.
Bad, you know?
It was like, oh, I, I, I'm not worried about, you know, two thousand thirty-eight. Just care about the next.
Yeah.
Five, six, seven years. That was the last version that, um,